I appreciate that. It looks nice, I think.
Yeah. Okay, let's call this meeting to order, be good please. First order of business would be the minutes, minutes from the June 4th meeting. A lot of documentation within that, uh, within those minutes to back up the text. I did not find any, well, I think there maybe should be one, the identity, I do remember my notes here. On page 706, under the 2018 tax settlement from the Nelson County Sheriff, by unanimous local court, here's by order to approve the 2018 tax settlement from the county sheriff as presented. I'd like to add the word pending audit to the, to the language here if we could. I meant to call you on that, I'm sorry. I had my notes. Any other changes need to be made?
I don't see nothing.
Motion to approve.
I'm not getting motion.
Motion from Keith Metcalf, your second. Second by Gary. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved, motion will carry. Thank you all. Bills list, additional bill list and transfer. Rhonda, the budgeted line item transfer, some of those have been from, we've been carrying them forward.
Yeah, that's just the cleanup area and get all the line items in budget.
Bound to balance, all the line items. And then you have your bills list and additional bills list.
Can you explain what is that Aqua treat for monthly water treatment?
That is at the Civic Center, maybe one of the other buildings where you treat your, uh, the cooling tire.
Okay.
That has, and I don't know for lack of a better term, it's got a chemical like, like an antifreeze type of substance that goes through the lines.
That answers.
Or geothermal.
Fuji or whatever you call it.
Al. Al.
It's raised like it's a tringone, you know, bottled water or something.
Yeah, yeah. But it's one of the necessities. Any other questions? Do you pay the motion to approve the bills and transfers?
Motion to pay the bill to transfer.
Thank you Bernard. Motion by Bernard Ice, it's her second. Second by Jeff. Discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved, motion will carry. Okay, first on the regular agenda items, you guys had this a couple of court meetings ago. It's the energy project assessment district ordinance and the resolution related to the energy project administrative agreement. Just to remind everybody, that was, that is an ordinance that basically creates an energy district for the county and had some benefit in financing for large projects. In particular, uh, there's one, one of the new motels has requested us to consider doing so. We, I personally have checked with a couple of counties that have done this. There's no negative effect to the counties. It's a way to get some additional financing on some larger projects. And plus it, it gets the energy efficiency, uh, energy star ratings for your community to be in the modern era. I would recommend if the court to approve on first reading, advertise for second.
How many counties, I've done a little checking myself.
It's just about four counties, five counties.
You're right, say urban county, I never heard about.
They're the northern, um, most, like Bloom County, Campbell County, that area, because they're very progressive.
Close to Ohio.
Close to Ohio. Uh, it's, sometimes it just takes a while to get this, that, that information to the people. It doesn't, it can't cost the county, it doesn't cost the county any revenue or...
I have a question. Like on this tax bill that they gave us a couple of weeks ago, it's real property, this is example, real property is $56,000, EPAD is $71,000 for a total of $127. And then on the penalty, now will the penalty be assessed to the EPAD also if it's not paid?
Oh, I'm satisfied with it.
And we will get that 1%.
Well, they do.
They do or the county?
Uh, no. The, the, the tax bill, they'll have an additional line item on the tax bill.
Right, like that.
Yeah. And, and, uh, and what that will do is it'll come to, uh, to the county. I mean, the PBA will do the tax, you know, do the tax, the sheriff together, just like the specialty.
Right, but the penalty, will that go to EPAD or will the penalty go to the county sheriff's department for collecting it?
Well, there is a collection fee. I can't tell you.
Yeah, but the sheriff act like he wasn't going to get that.
Yeah, sheriff act like he wasn't going to get anything out of it.
And they carry number one lien holder on the piece of property.
So, my point is, how many people are going to be late? On a commercial property, you're going to have one, um, you know. You asked me, I mean, I wish you'd let me know earlier. We had the guy here, we had the guy here, court mate discussing it.
But he just gave us a look at it. We didn't have time to look at it during court meeting.
That was four weeks ago.
It's very rare that the businesses don't pay their taxes. It's more the private proprietors.
Yeah, but you see.
Probably in a single digits of maybe five to seven percent of the tax bills that are not paid.
All, all bills are still due to the county no matter what. You know, we're not losing a thing.
I know, but I just don't have enough information. I've asked, I haven't got any answers.
All you can do is vote it down. I'm just, I want to vote yes or no. Well, and, and it's, and it's, I think it's a benefit to a large project because it gives them a little bit more financing abilities. Uh, and, and listen, when you get into large projects like this, sometimes it takes two or three banks to make a deal work.
I agree with that. I agree with that. I've just carried on this 1%.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah.
I don't see any downside to it. I mean, people that participate and choose to do so.
Yeah, nobody's pushing anybody's arms, are they?
No.
The only concern that really that I have is, is the taxing of creating a taxing district for it. And, and the fact that your taxes, from what I understand about the whole thing, they over assess your taxes a certain rate, right?
You're, you're not creating a taxing district.
No, no.
You're creating what you call an energy efficient district, just a terminology. It's a fancy way for some group of.
Why does fiscal fact attorneys?
Right, right. I understand.
Uh, come up with a creative.
Well, tell me, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that these loans get paid off is through that, like this bill that they sent specifically, the real property rate was 56,000.
You know, they're billing themselves.
Right, right.
You're, the person that's taking the loan out and billing themselves.
It's just a way for them to pay back their loans.
Yeah, it just becomes part of the loan payment.
The EPAD rating is 71,000, correct? So really it's almost $20,000 more than the real property assessment. Is that correct?
The, the energy, uh, the energy assessment amount, it's, it's just like a mortgage payment, really. It's all.
What's a double mortgage in a way?
Yeah, but, but it's not.
And it gets passed on too, right?
The county's not missing a dime.
Why does the county even need to be involved?
Because you have to say, we're saying that we agree with this, uh, this type of financing. It's a way to get larger projects financed. I can tell you, I've, I've seen several deals here recently that took about four, three or four different financing avenues to make deals work. You get into five, 10, 20, $30 million deals, sometimes it takes a group of people to put it together.
And this is basically for energy savings, right?
It's for energy savings.
Heat, air, solar panels.
They're paying us. The guy that's doing the mortgage is making the payment.
Right, but what I'm saying is that assessment is 20, let's say, let's say you're 20, they assess it $20,000 more than the real property rate. That, that $20,000 is the money that's paid to pay.
Is that correct?
Financially.
I'm fine.
Nothing to do with that.
You sure?
Yeah.
That's not, well, I had some people looking into it and that's when I was told.
I can have them come back to the court. You got that kind of question.
Yeah. I mean, what do we need? We need a motion, right? I'm like Jeff.
I don't have anything on the floor yet.
I'm like Jeff. I don't see anything costing county anything for this.
Or obligating any taxpayers.
Right.
No, you know, obligating taxpayers.
That's some business, something, because it seemed pretty simple.
Yeah, it did to me.
We just, so basically approve a vehicle for financing.
Thank you. That's a better term than I could use there, vehicle for financing.
I'll make the motion immediately.
Approved.
And advertise for second.
Second. Second. Further discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved?
Nay.
Two nays. Motion carries. Thank you.
Who are the two nays?
Two nays is number one and number five. I can't imagine they're on the same page.
They're on the same page.
There's nothing wrong with that vote. There's nothing wrong with your vote. Nothing wrong with it. Next would be appointments. Couple of appointments today. Then we'll have to advertise on that. And I'll get you the date on that here.
Please do, okay.
The first would be Northeast Nelson Fire District Board. The, the board has recommended Alex Kirsch. You have checked that out, right Eric?
Yes, sir.
As far as he's willing to serve and, uh, some of the board members think he'll be a good member.
Yeah, he's supposed to be a big young man, so.
Go get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Alex.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion carries. He's from Fairfield, by the way.
You know the guy.
Uh, the, the person that recommended him, it was, uh.
Holly Record?
Yes. She's a great person in the community, does a lot of work over there, very involved with the Northeast.
Mark Sun.
Fine's in Orange.
Yes, he is. Mark Sun.
That's what they used to say in church, St. Thomas. Next would be to the Barstown Nelson County Air Board. We have a vacancy on the board now. Mr. David Sutherland has officially resigned from the board. And Bernard, uh, he has named a person that he thought would make a good board member and is willing to serve. Terry Welshens, Welshens, is that how you pronounce the name?
He's a pilot.
He's a pilot. Uh, I think he does suburban tours of some sort. Uh, and I've talked to several of the air board members and then he comes to the meeting to participate anyway. So, somebody who's interested in showing up, that'd be nice.
I'll make a motion for him, Terry.
Motion been made by Bernard Ice, it's her second. Second by Gary. Further discussion? All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Pay rate order for 2019 and '20. You guys have a copy of that. Sorry about the inconvenience. I've sent you one of the working copies that had two lines in it to start with on a couple of the departments. Basically a 1.9% rate increase. Any questions, you guys? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you Eric.
I'll second.
Second by Jeff. Further discussion? All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry.
Judge, do you have a copy from here?
I do. I do. You didn't get a copy in your mailbox?
Are you sure?
Okay, I'll give it. I'll, I'll give you that one. I'll get one. It's in the computer system. Supply bids.
So every year we bid, out we say supplies, uh, coves, asphalt, that's the big thing, rock.
Rock. Did you guys get a copy of that?
I did, yes.
Dean, did you give it to the news media?
Did have.
You got one? Okay.
So basically, you know, I put the most fun one up top, asphalt is, is up to $62.50 a ton per surface, which is what you guys were overlaying. Last year was $57 a ton. So it's up $5.50 a ton. Now, there is a fluctuating, um, price on this that as oil goes up and down, the prices go up and down with it. So I don't know what year it'll end up, but as of July 1st, this will be your new price. Uh, you gotta add $13.50 for the hauling place, so that makes it $76 a ton. I think our last bill Rhonda was roughly $73 a ton.
$73.
Yeah. Uh, rocks, you see those, you know, the biggest thing we use is either that crushstone base or rip rap or 57. Rock is basically at 50 cents a ton, with the exception of rip rap, they went up a dollar a ton on that. Asphalt came down. It was 110 last year, now it's 88. And, you know, we can go through that. DNR got the fuel. Dean, if you want me to name each, each vendor or had.
Let me, let me, excuse me, take over here. We'll just, let me make recommendations for, okay. That way you won't have to. Uh, on the, of course, Mago is the only, uh, the company that bid on the asphalt. On the rock is Cedar Creek Quarries was the only company. Salt, uh, it was Compass Minerals America. Motor Fuels, uh, DNR oil was three and a half cents above rack prices. The road oils, uh, it was the, uh, let's see, who was a little bidder there?
Actually, there was no bids on that.
No bids, so you just bid right on contract.
But asphalt material thing has the same contract price, so I can go through that.
We went through that, yeah. Corrugated mellow was Contact out of Winchester on the corrugated. And the plastic pipe was Haze Pipe out of Lowell. I would make recommendations to court to make that award to those various vendors.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is it fair to say branded, everything on this list is probably one of them since last year?
Everything.
Soil and down.
Just count. Soil went down.
Soil went down. Soil went down and fuel did. Fuel was four cents above rack price last year and then went down to three and a half.
Now, the fuel bill is adjustable too?
Yeah. So when they pick it up in Louisville, what they call rack prices, whatever DNR's paying for that particular day.
3.5 above that.
And then they add three and a half cents. So we're only paying three and a half cents more per gallon than what they pay for. And so every time they come, they'll give us an invoice.
And they haul it.
And the key is that we take, uh, 500 gallon loads, 300 gallon loads, 1,000 gallon loads.
Right.
Whereas.
Just have 100 gallons.
It worked out pretty good.
It does.
Yeah, they've had it for years.
Uh, other, other vendors in years past have been at least a nickel to 10 cents higher on rack price.
Just one more quick question. Uh, like the asphalt for instance, I know that getting it locally is probably better, better material because it's hotter. I think we've kind of discussed that before. And so those, uh, you don't usually get, do you just advertise for?
We actually had a vendor last year that, that did bid on. Was it last year or year before I said?
Last year.
Last year.
So Eric, just real quick, I did some analysis for different vendors for this particular year. And Mago was the only vendor that replied. It was Scotty's, there was another gentleman that bid it last year. Nally and Hayden, of course, they operate more in Maryam Gammern. And then Mago. What kills people, of course, is hauling so far.
Sure.
And that, the, the, last year the material price was cheaper from the guy that bid against Mago, but his haul bill was three and a half.
Right.
So time you add the two numbers together, they were more.
I understand.
So, and then you got the issue with, it is what it is, you know, asphalt has to be a certain temperature when you lay it. So it gets tough if you haul it very far.
True.
And they all know that.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. They kind of stationed them out so many miles apart, so we know, but.
Exactly.
Does that help?
It does, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Second by Jeff. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Thank you all. Brad, appreciate your help on that always.
Yes, sir.
You inherited that job somewhere along the way.
I think I don't know if I inherited or started to do it.
I'd rather call it an inherited. Yeah, he's been doing it about 15 years now. I, we, I used to do this. Okay, the workman's comp and general liability renewals. The, uh, good news is that, uh, the workman's comp went down. The bad news, the general liability went up. About what we'd save on the workman's comp. We, we've had some, uh, last four years had big losses. Just refresh your memories. Uh, the losses include two garbage compacters at the landfill, John, uh, Wickland House. So with those compacters were about a hundred and some thousand dollars apiece. And then the, uh, the, uh, Wickland home was about $124,000. The, uh, garbage truck the other day, a few months ago, was $35,000. I can go through, I don't want, I don't want to keep going, but, so we've had some bad experiences. And, uh, and I felt like next year it'd be, we should level back out.
What time?
And we did, we did shop the market on the, on the, with the Travelers and another vendor, that they were in the neighborhood of $300,000.
So the bids come back in comparison to what was budgeted?
Um, we budgeted 10% increase and it went up 20%. But we were able to save enough on workman's comp to balance, balance it up.
I meant the total on those two.
On those, the total on those two? Oh, we're, oh, we're, we're probably better than the budgeted. Yeah. Yeah, we budgeted 20%, I think, on workman's comp and 10% on, what is it, 10 and 10 or 10 and 20?
10 and 10.
10 and 10, so 20%. It's about, about what the increase is.
So not 10 cents difference, huh? Because you said one went up 10, one went down 10.
One went up, uh, like quite a bit more, but it balanced, I mean, within $10,000 was what I'll tell you. Now, but again, I did check, we did check other vendors through the broker.
Need a motion?
Need a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Jeff Leirs, her second. Second by Bernard Ice. Discussion?
Have you thought about increasing the deductible? I'll see down the bottom where it says it's a deductible.
I did, but I haven't. Over the years, of course, told you not to unless you want to. I, I wouldn't recommend it. Because we, we got quite a few offender vendors in certain departments. Everybody's looking around the back. The sheriff, sheriff, sheriff and I have a guy looking around the back. Uh, I don't think you save a whole lot compared to the big picture, Eric. I wouldn't if I was, my personal. All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. You got a copy of that?
Well, I'm slipping. Are you sure? Are you sure I messed up?
Got it. Thank you.
I do face it in the mask, I forget what I've done. It was my fault.
Okay, um, in our budget last year and this year, and last year we didn't spend it. There's a, there's a $50,000 allowance in there for, for repairs to Wickland, in particular painting Wickland. But when we got to get ready to paint last year, we got to looking at the shutters. The shutters probably need to be dealt with first. Uh, and, and the, uh, need to repair and fix the shutters should be done before the actual painting. Of course, when you repair the shutters, you'll paint the shutters, whoever the vendor is. We shopped around trying to find, uh, we actually advertised the painting process and nobody wanted to bid on it because they didn't want to do the shutters. Because you, it's, these shutters are eight and nine feet tall, very heavy. And, uh, there's only a handful of people that have that skills and they want to take them down and slap by slap, slap by slap. We finally, we finally found somebody, Lamb Incorporated, uh, John, what's the fellow's name? Tony, Tony Lamb, Tony Lamb. Uh, and he's willing to do those shutters and, uh, we're going to do a set of 20, is that right, John?
Yes, it's 20, it's a set of 10, so it's.
Set of 10, but 20 shutters. This is all the front. We'll see how it goes. And he'll, he'll take them off and repair them and paint them and put them back.
How many windows out there got shutters?
Um, it's about twice as many. So they're probably around one out of 21. Supposed to be about that, just under half.
So is the front the worst?
Yeah. Well, they're all pretty bad, but.
You can pick and choose, but.
We thought.
You can choose, but one side, you'll take it down.
Well, that's still come out of the front?
This is actually the county's fund, the $50,000. It won't be $50,000, but, you know, we, it'll be a start into the painting process.
What about the Trigg Foundation? Can you bring that out there?
Uh, we, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting on that coming up probably next month or two.
Okay.
Uh, and then. Because we didn't, they want us to hold that money and we approved something at that time. And we might ask them to go ahead and do the rest of the shutters on that fund too.
Okay.
See, that, the Trigg, just for you that don't know, the Trigg family, uh, who we bought Wickland off of, has set up a fund where we get an annual, usually between $20,000 and $25,000 a year, since Mr. Trigg has passed away, to help repair the Wickland home and keep it up in good repair. It was a great thing that the Trigg family did. And we've been putting money into it as well, trying to keep the building up.
So we could possibly ask that when we have the meeting to add this?
Add some.
Do some more.
Or do some more. I think we have a responsibility to do some.
He did take one out. This guy did take one down and rebuilt it.
Yeah, you showed him. Gary now sent that down.
So he's done one of these shutters?
He did one. He just took one down just to say.
How long did it take him to do that?
About a day. Like a hour, just get one shutter down and rebuild.
And then he can put it back.
He's open once he gets a bunch of them. He can get like two a day.
Those things are heavy.
It's.
Just to find somebody.
And this is the only bid we could come up with?
We've looked at getting new shutters, but we got to pass through the area council. And basically we have to restore these shutters. That's what they're requesting.
This is a specialty item, so you can call it, you already don't have to actually advertise because it's below the $20,000 range. And, and, uh, by the way, that law has changed now. It's $30,000.
Right, right.
We'll have to discuss that later on. Uh, but it's an opportunity. If somebody's willing to do it. Just like the brick columns out front, the repairs.
Yeah, I did a good job on those.
He did a good operation.
We, we bid those and only got two bidders.
Can you appeal the Heritage Council's recommendation?
If you want to get on their backlist, you can.
Well, I mean, come on. You know, that's a lot of money.
Well, you know what? New, new shutters are $20,000, $25,000.
Yeah, but they will last a lot longer than these old, old shutters.
I thought that we weren't governed under the historic.
So would have.
Okay, so we're not in the city, the store, the district, we're governed by the state.
I, the state, yes.
So we have to, oh, I'm figuring with them.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about, chub pots and.
And actually, in reality, uh, the, it's a good way to restore the home. That's, I mean, the whole ideal. And I, I looked at the easy way out. I promise you I did. And that's the easy way out, getting new shutters. I thought we at least fixed the price.
I'll fix the ones that are there, I think. Just the historical.
This comes from number four down there. I like.
You wouldn't tear them off your house.
No, he, he would. He puts them behind Laverne a minute.
He'd have it in the garage one piece at a time.
Yeah. One more question on the Wickland, real quick. When are they putting the fence back up by the post, new post? The fence are down.
Well, we're not done with that project yet.
You got a little bit of.
Cat, cat on, yeah. Well, I wouldn't even think about it until them cats put it in.
It kind of looks kind of tragic.
Need a motion to approve.
I need a promotion to prove, uh, Tony Lamb to make the repairs to shutters.
You still got time on this, cuz.
Has he got in? Most of it made.
Make the motion to approve.
By Jeff Leirs, second?
My second.
Second by Gary.
He's around the corner.
He's around the corner. He's wanting to talk.
I'm Gary, I'm number five.
He's wanting to talk, man.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Are you gonna be sure this guy's got all the proper insurance?
We have to.
Oh, yeah. I always do that. I'm the wording on that.
I, I would like to see if he's better.
I would too.
I would love to see. I mean, have you, I mean, is it exhausted? I can't believe.
You ought to go.
I mean, I know it's difficult to do now, now that the bids are visible, but that seems a little bit salty, of course, I thought the call.
Now, you understand, we went out and saw, on our administrative policy, you, if it's $20,000 or less, you go out and get quotes and present. And Billy, I mean, Billy Brown didn't want to touch it and.
Who else did we?
David Cook.
I don't think he wanted to touch.
David Cook, Joe Call Wayne Downs. He does that kind of stuff. He did a bunch of lights for the city. They reasonable.
I was happy with the price.
It was you.
Yeah.
If you need any work done, let me know.
You just say, you're living like me. Most of the time. All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion carries. Thank you. Was that an aye, you, yes or no?
I'm on nay.
Nay, okay. Nay by Eric. No problem.
Two nays?
What about that?
No, I've gone 26 years and we had three nays a whole.
Two in one.
Two in one year.
No, I don't think you're telling the truth.
Expect more.
Let's go to Lanto Savaway's report. Oh, I can send.
So 4th of July on Thursday this year, so we'll be closed Thursday and then pick up Friday and Saturday.
Will you repeat that? Now you're talking like my daughter, so fast.
4th of July, it'll be on Thursday, so we're regular scheduled, Monday and Wednesday will be off Thursday and then the day behind, Thursday and Friday.
He had to say it real fast so I could remember.
Other than that, it's normal for us.
Okay. Uh, Road Department report, first item I want to talk about before we get to Lee is industrial park, additional paving that needs to be done. You guys approved, and I think, I don't think Eric and you, Gary. Takigawa cane that we extended the road down, I don't, I don't think we approved. I couldn't find in a record where we approved the black topping of that. We did the rock and extension of.
The road department actually, yeah.
Did the work on it.
Extending the road out and putting the rock down.
They got, you get a copy, I put the copy of that in your mailbox. I don't know if I did or not.
No.
Okay. Uh, the, the, uh, in order to extend the blacktop down to where Takigawa's truck entrance will come out, which is by the way a public road, already dedicated, right Brad? Is it a dedicated road?
It's not dedicated to city, but.
I know, but it's, it's a public.
It's a dedicated right.
Right away. But it's in a city's, in a county, county road.
It is, it, it, the city is annexed there, okay? There's a fifty foot or maybe sixty foot right away that goes down through there. That road has not been dedicated to the city, it's our road.
Well, they annexed it.
They annexed it, because they annexed it does not mean it's the city road.
Really? Why? We get in that trouble all the time.
You can annex a piece of property and you go and build a road into it, it's got to meet their standards. That's the reason when we put the rock in there, we put off eight, ten, eleven inches thick to make sure we met their standards. But the city ain't gonna pay for this, guys, we might pay for this.
I'm not asking the city to pay for it.
It's like a developer.
Like a developer, yeah.
Right, we are the developer in this situation.
And we should pay for the road and extend the road, because we invited Takigawa to come to our community. And we got four hundred some thousand dollars out of the deal and take some of that money and pay the road, ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
I understand.
Hundred and eighty feet short.
I'll make the motion, we paid the road.
Unless you want to go to Takigawa grand opening and talk to them about the gravel that you're standing on. Okay. You got the drift in you, Jeff. Motion's been made in the second. Further discussion? All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion carries. We didn't send this by email to the guys either? That was my bad, that was my bad.
So what we'll do, at some point, we can overlay that road if we so desire and get the thickness of the asphalt to meet the city specs and then give it. Bring it up to the city specs. But then, you know, they, they want, the city specs weren't, the Jeff, whether they're developing.
That makes sense.
So someday we'll do that. It's just we never wanted to spend money.
Lee, you report?
We replaced and repaired several culvers on Yates Cooninap Road, Plum Run and T Bradley Lane. We repaired some erosion around the bridge, abutment on Chester Hon Road. I don't know if you've got any thoughts about that, but we did get that taken care of. We're still trimming a lot of encroaching tree limbs on county roads. Got a crew out there right now just cutting low hanging branches and anything that's.
Have you got one of the straight saws?
Pulp saws and chainsaws, yeah. We repaired sink hose on Schumate Lane and Hibbs Lane and after this rain last week, we had some torrential rain, some gully washers. We had some asphalt that was damaged by flash flooding on Schumate Lane and we got out there and repaired it. Bush hogs, they finished round one and they've completed the second round on District Four. So we're starting in District Five. And that's better.
It already needs to be. It's unreal.
Okay, we'll go to EMA and EMS. You guys something else?
Yes, do we want to clarify these links?
Okay.
So, you know, at the last court meeting, we discussed Cecil Ridge Road and where the exact finish of what we call county maintenance of that particular road. Dean went back, found some research in the old fiscal corridors of nineteen ninety-nine, that when that road was closed and it references a two point one mile section of roadway. And the issue lies in Lincoln Trail only has one point eight zero five miles. Well, for me, Brad Spalding, county engineer, I will only put county money on what this list says. So what I need you guys to do, if you guys are comfortable with it, there is documentation showing it goes to the two point one miles, is to recognize that and say, yes, we'll maintain that two point one miles and then we'll send a letter to Lincoln Trail saying, change the one point eight to two point one for us.
Do you think that's just a typing error?
I have no clue.
Let me explain to the discussion of new members, how that list that Lincoln Trail did for the transportation cabinet. Lincoln Trail Area Development District was a contractor for the state transportation cabinet. They took a grant that they received at Lincoln Trail, they hired a person to go county to county. They asked us, we sent one of our people out with that person to ride the road. They had a little meter and they rode it. And it could have been at that time just a matter of interpretation by the person that was in the vehicle. You understand, you got a lot of these little roads that were.
It felt like the guy, we got measuring them right now, he might not peel the grass off on the sides. He just measures what's.
We'll talk about that in a minute. But, but you understand, it could have been just a, not, you know, not fully aware of exactly where the road went based on documentation. Easy to do, and you got three hundred and fifty miles of roads and there's a lot of them just less than a half mile or so and they go to nowhere. They just stop. So anytime we can clarify legally, we try to clarify. And he's going to show you another one in a minute, kind of the same way. And I want to, if we got a road, if it says, we have documentation said it should go to two point one, by golly, we need to maintain the two point one. That way, there's no problems down the road, the next generation will have documentation that's been done right.
What's the last portion of, what is it?
Mud.
Mud?
Yeah. Let me just say one time, that whole entire Cecil Ridge was about five or six miles.
It was ninety-nine, is that when you said?
It was a long.
It started like everywhere in ninety-nine.
You were there, Bernard, up in the other building. And it was contentious.
Is that where they ride them big wheels off the hill?
No.
You got your big wheel, you ride all the way.
That's at the root camp. They were doing that at this spot till we did all this, really cleaned up the area.
Well, that was them four.
Yeah, they were coming in from all over the state, actually.
Yeah, it's about like that, what's that thing that park everybody goes to? Yeah, Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge.
Yeah, it was, it was real similar to that and all the property owners, they was throwing beer cans everywhere.
And if the road, if the road was muddy and they couldn't get through a certain area, they'd just make a new road.
They went Moss Brown.
It was same, the other end was Moss Brown. Okay, and the other road, Brad, go and discuss the other road, that way we can do a vote for one motion.
The other one is injustice here, it's called Jesse James. And this one comes our.
We, actually, Brad and I went out there together on that one. You guys have that documentation too?
Okay, so, only thing we can think of is when two forty-five came through, it took Jesse James off back in the day.
It would mean something else before, but.
Right, and there's an old plaque that shows that it is a dedicated forty foot right away through there. But the asphalt ends at a certain point, six hundred and sixty some feet down. And that's what Lincoln Trail, I believe, says, here, I'll get to the fact footage, well, zero point one two five miles. Well, when you go out there, there's about twenty-five feet short of where the asphalt stops and the gravel goes another twenty-five feet or so.
You can clearly see the road there.
Yeah, and if you walk on out into this, what I'll call areas, dedicate forty foot right away to now is just grass, you can see rock down in it. So back in the day, at some point in time, there was a road that went through there and still dedicated right away. The reason I'm so particular about that, again, you can't spend public money on private property. This is public dedicated right away, guys. We're just trying to clarify the distance on this road of where it stops and where it starts. So what basically Dean and we're saying is, they're off by twenty-five feet from there.
Is it on this, obviously we don't have one of them with this.
That's the conclusion.
Is it on?
Yes.
No, thirteen thirty-four or sixteen thirty-four?
What's the CR number back there?
Thirteen thirty-four, I believe that's my memory.
Did it?
Twelve sixty-one.
You talking about picking up all the way through that?
No, twenty-five more feet, twenty-five feet. Thirteen thirty-four, yeah.
Jesse James, back in the day in nineteen ninety, they had zero point one. Now, our list is point one two five. Which in law. That's what we believe, we don't know for sure. But there's an old plaque that shows this is a dedicated right away through there. And it's a public right away.
Now, who's responsible for maintaining the public right away?
Well, this, Jeff, actually, this, this road was blacktopped to twenty-five feet short, man.
I have no problem with the twenty-five feet.
He's, the question is, technically, we are. There's a lot of right ways that we own and it comes into, well, what is maintained? You know, I have been asked to go out in that area and do some stuff.
We have before and we call it, you know, case law.
Right. Just because it is dedicated to us, it becomes into a discussion of, well, what is maintained?
And actually, this is the case, when you go back to the end, the area where it goes back to, there's a nice turn ramp.
Which our garbage guys.
Which our garbage guys are using right now, anyway.
I spent more time out there than I care to mention.
So you're on it?
Yeah, twenty-five foot of it. And this one, more work after the rest of it.
Well, it is dedicated, we have to go right to go down there and do work, it's just.
There's no right ways that we don't have. Somebody lived down there, the next magistrate would be coming up to the door.
Somebody might move there tomorrow, though, right? Somebody could move there tomorrow at the end of this.
No, I mean, there's property owners there, lots are.
Yeah, the rest of property owners, it will come off of two forty-five, so you're safe there.
Well, was it ever a fiscal court order where, like you did with my road?
A dedicated plaque, that's, back in that day, that's the same thing as.
What we talked about earlier, the developers. That was a development road at one time?
But when a plaque is dedicated, Keith, back in, I can only say in the last twenty-five years, when a plaque is dedicated, the court is accepting those into their system.
Not until it's.
Let me finish, tell my tale. That you are dedicating that when they need some specifications. And, and we've done that same principle here, it just is set for thirty, twenty-five, thirty years, nobody's done anything to it. In principle, in my mind, but. Motion in order.
Two for both roads?
Both roads.
I don't know what you want me to tell you, so we update our records to reflect the additional footage?
The additional footage on Jesse James and Cecil Ridge.
I'll make the motion on Cecil Ridge and Jesse James.
You're second by Jeff Leers, thank you. All approves say aye. Disapprove?
I was a little bigger than his.
Motion carries. Court records are more important than my books, that's for sure. I go over here all the time looking at records.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anything else, Brad? Is there anything else? EMA and EMS report?
Your EMS monthly report for May was in your packet. Six hundred forty-nine calls were responded to. That averaged twenty point nine per day, pretty busy month for May. We're at six thousand two hundred thirty-three calls for the year, averaging eighteen point six calls per day for the year. Met this morning with EMS committee, discussed one of our vehicles and the engine issues that it had. We had two quotes from Conway's, one to repair the existing engine that's only about four years old, three and a half years old. That came in at eight thousand eight hundred and ninety, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Judge and I met, talked about repairing an old engine and asked for a quote to replace that engine. And got a quote for that to replace what they for rebuild, six point O full block was fifteen thousand. Went back deadly investigating on the amount of money we put into this truck since two thousand and ten when it was new. I'll point out that we remounted a box on this chassis in two thousand and ten, which was about a twelve year old box at the point that we remounted. And to date, without this repair, we're right at thirty-eight thousand dollars in engine work only on that truck. So our meeting this morning with EMS committee was, what was, what's the best route to go with this? Fix the motor or maybe look out at the market to see if there is something feasible to replace the truck with in a used vehicle? So Judge.
My recommendation to the court and committees, and you guys chime in, Keith, area here, was instead of putting eight or almost nine thousand dollars into a fix, or even fifteen thousand dollars into a complete rebuild of the rebuilt engine, with only two years warranty, the market's full of good used ambulances of that or anything, thirty to forty thousand dollar range, that have good engines in them. This engine's a bad egg to start with, the six point O that tell me. I just heard, I'm only repeating what the mechanics tell me. And we constantly, constantly, Bernard's been here longer than anybody, has, we've had problems with that particular engine, not just in this vehicle, but in vehicles in the past. So, so if you guys, I think it prudent for us to go and, we've been successful just before, look at good, of good used ambulances. Carry us over and then we're going to raise the bid on new ambulances as well in the next few months ahead. So we'll, you know, keep us rotating, keep us going, I think it's good business to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Joe to seek a used ambulance up to forty thousand dollars.
Motion's been made in the second. Further discussion?
No, I'd just like you to use your expertise as you have before because you've been very successful.
He knows this stuff pretty good, yeah. Further discussion, then all, yes?
The old one, I missed that part of it, what happened with the old one? The one that you're gonna DX after?
It's a six point O that's in it.
Once we get rid, when you get rid of, what will you do?
We'll do, got a couple options, we'll look at that box and see if it's, we'll get a quote to refurb the box that's on it if it's physically sound. If that is the case, then we would probably move toward remounting that on a new chassis and let that appear a replacement.
You put a lot of work in that, I appreciate that, that, and you saved you a ton of money on that.
All approves say aye. Disapprove? Motion carries. Thank you all. Motion was made by, who was it? Gary? And Houston, Bernard's second. That was three minutes ago.
Could you have them move their papers off my recorder?
Can you move your papers, Gary? There you go, Gary, you did it all perfect.
The Gare did it. A burner did one.
That thing might come up missed.
Here's how that works, when I do the cost per run, it's all the runs, all the calls made to that area. So if you look at New Haven, they're, over the, over time, their incompletes were less. So if incompletes are less, that's a run that's not divided into that total charge. So it raises the cost per run for the runs that weren't made. Follow me on that? So when you, when we average, we average cost per run for every run, not just the completed runs. If those runs are down, the cost for run will go up if on the incomplete.
I mean, that's fifty percent higher.
Well, and the other thing on that is, is New Haven residents tend to go to further distances, so your mileage inflates their cost per run.
A lot of the south end, New Haven area will go to Hardman Memorial, right, Joe?
Hardman, well, a lot go to Louisville Hospital, so you're adding another about fifteen miles to an average portion of run that goes to Louisville.
And at one time, Nelson County was a second, most visited county to Hardman Memorial. Jail report? Oh, recreation report, I'm sorry. Sorry, Bryce? I did that once before.
Little League Baseball will be hosting All-Star games at the park this weekend. We will have visiting teams from Oden County, St. Matthews, Henry County and Shelby County, so if the rain holds off, it'll be a packed house out there. Also, a U sixteen Nelson Elite Girls team won the President's Cup and they advanced to the Midwest Region President's Cup in Wichita, Kansas. And they got beat in the semifinals. Also, another Nelson Elite team had advanced to the semifinals of the State Cup. So they had a good year.
Carol, Carol Donner.
Is on the U sixteen.
Went to Kansas. One game short of being to the finals. One and W one to the.
The Nelson semifinals are awesome.
That's pretty tight. Soccer big. Jail report?
As of today, we have a hundred and forty-seven inmates, sixty-two are state, eighty-five are county, forty-seven waiting for district court charges, thirty-eight circuit court charges, a hundred and nineteen are female, I mean, a hundred and nineteen are male and twenty-eight are female. And we'll have the staff analysis next meeting.
I've got one. We're gaining back up there, does the rocket docket, to you, is helping you at all?
Does rocket docket help?
Not that you can say.
Most of them take, take the deal and just fly to the other back end.
Do you remember what Matthew actually said, if you remember what Matthew talked about, that you'll never know.
I know, but if you don't know.
The state claims it's helping, but when you.
But when you getting 147 inmates?
Okay, so we're paying $15,000 a year for rocket docket. And, and, and you add, just take that 147, you add 10 more to it.
Or even five.
Whatever it is. You don't know that. You don't know how many you avoided.
You add that 10 more to it, you're gonna have nine returns and one probably make it through.
Well, that's what the sheriff used to call it, catch and release. Your presence is catch and release.
That's the revolving door. It's, the, the rocket docket would work if it was somebody that messed up one time.
Yeah.
And got released and never came back and, or, but it's the same thing over and over and over. Like you said, they do something, they plead to the rocket docket, they're released. The following week, they're back in there for another charge.
For another separate charge.
I mean, the rocket docket's a good thing. It's sticking by. Whoever's taking it, the deal will stick by it because you're staying in, in court and not going up to felony court. And after you, uh, do your little spiel, your record swings.
We can ask Matthew about when he comes back and gets back in.
I just feel like it's, I don't know, like you said, it's revolving door, it's out there in cyberspace.
You gotta make a fix to the problem, but it's really, it's very small percentage of it's working.
If you save two or three inmates from coming to your jail, you've saved 50.
Well, he said nine out of 10's coming back, so, yeah.
Well, my perspective on that, the rocket offers are not, I don't think that, this is just my little thing. I don't think the Commonwealth prosecutors are not offering them to people who've had charges before or have had charges before. So, this is their first charge. Then they might come back, but it's not, they're not offering them to people who are in court over and over and over. From what I see.
Is that true?
And you can talk with Matthew about it. That's what I see in court on Tuesdays.
It is the set, the, the...
Talk with Matthew about it. From my perspective of sitting in, being in court on Tuesdays. Yeah. I mean, they might come back, but this is, their, their rocket offers, they generally, one of their first times getting in trouble.
Okay. Anything else to jailer?
Thank you, jailer.
Okay, under old blue business, you guys have anything? I, I have something, I want to see what, what the flavor of the court is here. Possibly in July, just having one court meeting. It's been discussed with a couple of the magistrates. I'm about to be, maybe be gone, I'm not sure yet, on the 1st of July. Don't be laughing.
How'd your weekend go?
Years past, in July, we've spent many times have taken just a one court meeting. We're only required to have one. So, it's okay for the court to entertain a motion to suspend the first court meeting and only have the July 16th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made, so we're second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion? All approves, say aye.
Done.
Disapprove? Motion carries. It's against my wishes, but that's the way it's got to be. I'll leave it at that. Anybody have anything for the court?